Good evening. My name is Tony Molin. I'm the President and CEO of the Cedar Park Chamber of Commerce, and we're excited to be moderating this candidates forum. This is the third year we've done this, and we appreciate the candidates who are here for showing up, and we appreciate you for taking some time out of your day to listen to what these candidates have to say. I just got through talking to the candidates about our rules. They are going to be able to introduce themselves. They've got two minutes to do that. We're gonna have a few questions. We're gonna have, each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a question first, and each candidate will have an opportunity to answer a question last. And then finally, they will be able to take two minutes to have a closing remarks. And so, without any further ado, we're gonna go ahead and get this started. So, please, Mr. Thomas, if you wanna go ahead and give an introduction.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Stephen Thomas, Place One Cedar Park City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I have just a background. I've served on the City Council for approximately eight years, and I come from a background. I retired from state government, and now I work in the private sector, I'm a member of the Texas State Guard, and I was at one point an adjunct professor at the Austin Community College, and I kind of retired when the schedule was getting a little full. It's great to be able to serve the citizens of Cedar Park. I'm excited. We have so many great things to enrich the quality of life for our citizens, and we have a lot of work ahead, and sometimes it's, you know, it's great to sit here with my colleagues, being able to focus our work, and it takes a lot of time to make sure that some of these projects take years to get off the ground and get working, and we've been fortunate to work together for a significant amount of time to be able to get these projects done. So, it's a pleasure to be here and an honor to serve the citizens.
Mr. Grimes.
Good evening. I want to first thank the chamber for hosting this tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you for doing so. Lyle Grimes has been on City Council now for four years. I was elected originally in 2013. They re-elected in 2015. My people are bright for ten years here in the audience with us, and we have two boys. And so, Cedar Park, to me, is more than just a city. To me, it's home. And for each one of us here in the audience, I wanted to make sure it's our home as well. It's someplace that you know where to sleep and live in, but somewhere you can work, and where you can play. It's the last four years since I've been on council, we've been able to try to focus on how to put those aspects together. Couple of highlights, recently, number, rank number two, is the best place to raise a family in Texas. Number six is the best place to raise a family in all of the United States. So, I wanna continue focusing on that, on how to bring those parts together in order to continue to make Cedar Park more than just a city, to make it our home. Thank you.
Mr. Lux. Good evening. John Lux, thank you, Tony, for hosting this for the third year. I really appreciate it. We don't get enough opportunity to really engage and kind of sort of have this kind of forum, so I really appreciate that. Again, I'm John Lux, City Council Place Five for the city of Cedar Park, a twenty-year Navy veteran, both Kuwait, Iraq, and global wars upon terrorism. That twenty years, traveling the world, and when I retired out of Corpus Christi, I had seen Cedar Park and just really felt like this was a great place to meet my family so we could live, work, and play, and have a, you know, have a great quality of life. I served two years on the Planning and Zoning Commission and two years on the Tourism Board before I was appointed to the City Council, and then I ran, and then I was re-elected for two consecutive terms, so going into this is my second. On my day job, I'm an IT Program Manager for FICO, and I've been doing that since I retired from the Navy. And this has just been a great place to live, work, and play, and my wife, Michelle, a teacher at Leander High School, loves it here. Both my kids went through Leander ISD schools, and now my daughter is at Ann Corpus Christi doing mechanical engineering, and my son's at Ole Miss doing civil engineering. So, I just feel this is a great place, and just love this city, and I moved here because it's a great place for your families, and we've been ranked that way for our families. And I just want to continue that great work that we did so that families can, that come here because they know it's a great city, that continues to be a great city. Thank you very much, and appreciate your support.
Very good. And now, we'll get into the question and answer portion. The Bell Boulevard redevelopment project has important long-term impacts for the businesses in Cedar Park. What do you feel is the most important piece of this redevelopment? Mr. Thomas.
Well, certainly, it certainly has, it'll have a significant impact on the, just the tax base, right off the bat. The, when you look at redevelopment, this particular stretch, it was declining in property value and declining in sales tax revenue, so it was below anywhere else in the, in the city. And so, this revitalization is gonna have a significant impact. I look at it as a definitely improvement in quality of life. You're going to have parks, it's going to have walking retail space, and certainly there'll be a space for living, and it'll be, it's gonna be definitely an upscale component. And I think when you look at the value of this particular development, and what it's gonna be for the city, it's gonna be a great redevelopment project.
Mr. Grimes.
So, I am a big champion, I guess, of the Bell Boulevard, and will continue to be so. Development, I grew up in a city of Dallas. I grew up in a park of Dallas that, to be honest with you, I won't take my kids back to, and it's called Pleasant Grove, we can do it later. Because, to be honest with you, the city forgot about it. They kind of left it, and it went on to the newer, brighter, good things. Bell Boulevard, to me, is what Pleasant Grove was when I grew up. It's a good place. It's not bad. It's a good place to raise your kids today, but if you forget about it, and let it continue to, to not be left, if you live in unattended, and you don't woefully go in there and actually invest in its future, then what will it be like for my kids? What will it be like for my grandchildren? What will it be like for the future of Cedar Park? We need to, and we all are, intentionally going in and investing in this area, and it will return investment hand over hand in the future for generations to come. Thank you.
Mr. Lux. Yeah, I'd first like to say that I'm also a big proponent of this, and I think that the citizens of Cedar Park, out of anything that we've ever presented to the city, we had the largest turnout. We had tons of people, multiple town meetings, we've had multiple City Council meetings, we've met with all the, each individual property owner, and each individual person that were leasing from those property owners to describe what we were doing, and we've got full support from the citizens of Cedar Park, where they turned out for our town hall meetings, and then also from the property owners and the retail. Because what was mentioned by my esteemed colleagues, that's the lowest tax revenue. The property rates are going down, and we've been talking about it for years, and how we're gonna redevelop that area, but I always said, it was always kind of lipstick on a pig. And it looked a little bit better, but it didn't solve the real issue. But now that we're gonna be rerouting, which is a, which is a bad traffic area, which actually had fatalities in those suicide lanes, and now we reroute that traffic around there, you're not gonna have people crossing that road. So, we're gonna increase the traffic flow, we're gonna increase safety. We opened up forty acres of land, and I'm sorry, in a park. So, I'm for this, and it's gonna increase our revenue, and we're gonna get a good tax return, or rate of return on our investment.
The Bell Boulevard redevelopment project is one aspect of future development. The park at Cedar Park has just opened, and we continue to see a great deal of growth. What business would you like to see come to Cedar Park? Mr. Grimes.
Well, my nine-year-old loves to have a Buc-E's. And for my tax base, I would too. I drop at least fifty dollars every time we go in, and that's not for gas. So, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Buc-E's. Final answer.
Mr. Lux.
Hey. Hard to beat that one. Well, we have an in and out already, so that was one of my top things, and, but I think it's, it's, not to re-answer the question we just had before, but I really just think we need a destination part of our city, kind of like a mini domain in the Bell Boulevard area. Not just one shop in depth, in particular, but just an area where you've got a park, so that one area where you can go, and you can walk, and you can stroll, and you have restaurants along the side of that, where you can have, you know, we're in desperate need of patios outside of restaurants, so they can go out and have patios. And then you have places where people can live, and they can work, and then they can also, you know, play in that area, and we've got great retail and commercial. It's a destination area, it's not just one, one particular, you know, business that's there, but it's a whole area where people just look forward to going to, enjoying it, and having fun. Mr. Thomas.
You know, it's a, it's kind of hard to, it's a, you kind of wish what exciting things we can have, you know, we're fortunate with the Bell Boulevard, and that's, that's gonna take a few years to develop, and then we've got the quarry, which is gonna be an exciting, we don't even know yet what that's gonna be, but it's gonna be great. You know, it's, I'm excited, I, there's just the planning component on it. But kind of going back to the question of, you know, we're working on those places for people to, to enjoy, to live here, and that's important, that is, that's really, really important. But we still have to work on giving business here, high-quality business, so that our employees, our, our citizens can be employees locally and not have to travel out of the city. You know, I had done a study several years ago, we had five thousand cars leaving Cedar Park every morning, nine one eighty-three going downtown, so, so we wanna get that, we wanna get that business here.
Transportation is important to both residents and businesses. If a shopping center is difficult to get in and out of, some people will pass it by. What are your plans to help ease current and future transportation issues? Mr. Lux.
I think that we continue, and we've always had to have our master transportation plan. And you always continue to develop that, work with that, build on that, update it as needed. And in those things, it's widening the roads, it's creating turn lanes or deceleration lanes and so forth, and, you know, breaking mediums up so that, or even maybe, sometimes you have a long deceleration or left-hand turn lane, maybe breaking that, creating up, because we, you know, we know, like, again, it's been mentioned, we get a lot, we are able to lower our tax rate because of the retail and commercial that we're getting in our sales tax revenue. We wanna be able to support all the small businesses, so we're always available for a small business comes to us, because we may not see it on a day-to-day basis, that we got a problem, we'd like to have some type of, either a deceleration lane, or a left-hand turn lane into it, or a braking medium. Definitely wanna be able to support them in that, to create, we want the flow of going to people's businesses, and we wanna be able to support them.
Mr. Thomas.
Well, you know, one of the things we've been, you know, certainly focusing on, you know, the fourteen thirty-one, New Hope, and Andersonville, and getting those main roadways in and around the city, that has been really important as far as moving, moving high volumes of cars through us. Moving Bell Boulevard for the safety of our citizens is going to be a, is gonna be a good, good project. And I think that we focused on, as previously mentioned, these, these turn lanes and deceleration lanes and such. Those are very important, because we're moving people off, out of the way of the main traffic, and for safety and mobility, it's just significantly increased the safety factor for our city, and it's definitely, is what we wanna focus on and continue working on.
Mr. Grimes.
So, my colleagues have said a lot of things that we're doing, which is great. We are, we are, and I don't wanna actually repeat all those, because we are continuing to improve those. Some of the things that, when I go door to door knocking on the doors, to be honest with you, different neighborhoods give us great ideas. One of them actually will be out here, coming out of Discovery, I'm looking at maybe adding different lanes, and not just necessarily adding additional lane construction-wise, but allowing you to maybe make a turn to the right angle straight at the same time. So, those are the simple things we can, we're doing as well to improve traffic. Synchronization of lights, making sure that all of our lights are synchronized throughout our entire city. Doing things, and, and, so we're looking at throughout our city, each neighborhood, and how it affects the traffic through their neighborhoods, ensuring that we're actually doing what's best for that neighborhood, and what's gonna be overall for the master plan to move people in and out of our city.
Well, we're about halfway through, and it's going quite a bit faster than, than I thought, because we obviously are two people shy. So, I do think that this year, one thing that we always say that we might do is, we might ask for some audience questions. What I'm gonna ask is, if anybody in the audience does have a question, we have some index cards. Lyndy will be happy to give you an index card. You write it down, give it back to Lyndy, and we'll ask from up here, so, if you, if you raise your hand, we'll get that done as well. And we'll just go ahead and move on to the next question here. Cedar Park continues to be one of the safest cities in Texas. We utilize the Smart nine-one-one system and educate our youth on fire safety with the HEETS program. The city is about to build Fire Station Number Five, and the police department is building a state-of-the-art training facility. What do you plan to help, to do to help continue this trend? Mr. Thomas.
Well, fortunately, I, I sit on the Municipal Safety Committee, and, you know, training of our officers and training of our firemen is very important for us. The, so, we're continuing to focus a lot, the training facilities, and the, specifically the new trailer that was purchased for the, for the police to de-escalate these issues, and so we're gonna continue pushing for those particular, that type of training. I mean, it's, it's a, we're fortunate in that our police department, we're ranked in one of the safest cities in Texas in the United States, and we wanna take care of our police officers, and we wanna take care of our, our firemen, and ensure that they're able to perform their job safely and for the citizens.
Mr. Grimes.
Well, we continually to invest in our public safety, in public safety, both in fire and police. In two thousand and fifteen, approximately twenty million dollars was spent on fire and police. This year, it's gonna be somewhere north of twenty-six million. About a twenty percent increase in fire, and about nine percent or so increase in police. And in that same time that I've been on council, we've actually added about sixteen additional people to the police staff, to, what you wanna do is continue to make sure that we have enough police staff for the growth in population. And so, we wanna make sure we continue to have a safe city, and that's how we are approaching it. We're using the best methods that a police chief, we'll take a direction from him, we're not police, he is, he's trained to do so, and so, he's giving us direction when doing that. So, Fire Station, that is the last fire station we would building, and once it's done, that will cover all the city, too, man, that.
Mr. Lux. Yeah, I'm really proud of our public safety, the fire and the police department, just did an amazing job in, you know, keeping our city safe, to be the safest, the second safest city, and then, you know, having the ISO one rating. And, you know, and just like they were, Councilman Grimes was talking about, just this last year with our fire department, we gave them the biggest raise they've ever had in the entire history of this city. And we've also did, we did a three-year contract with the police, where we also recognized the great work they were doing. So, I wanna continue to look at that and make that competitive. But I do think that we, because of what we do for the equipment, and like we were talking about, expanding the police department and giving them training, having the ISO one training, that, that also deals with the infrastructure of the city, the building codes and so forth, and continuing to do that, so that we're keeping our fires, firemen, and our police officers stay with great equipment and great training. And just one of those amazing things, one of the facts that just recently went and looked at is, in the last four years, we've only had three police officers leave voluntarily. There's been, you know, retirements and so forth, and two of them wanna come back. And then for our fire department, we've only lost three voluntarily. So, I think we had a great work there.
And now, for our first audi, the audience question. They wanna know, one, one person out there wants to know, is it possible that the council will relax restrictions on backyard chickens? Mr. Grimes, you're up.
This was a very hot topic a couple of years ago, and they waited several, several months. And so, we heard from the public, and so that's one of our regulations, our current ordinance is one in the play, and so we are, that's what's in ordinance now, and so we will wait until the Senate does, and I know the bill right now before the Senate in the House, and we'll wait to see what happens there.
Mr. Lux. Yeah, I, I love chickens. I've always said that I love chickens, and we, and our ordinance does allow for you to have chickens. It's, it's some places that, it's just because of the density that we don't allow for people to have chickens. And then, you know, the other thing is, I don't think there's a single HOA in the city that allows for, for chickens. So, we're trying to align with that, and I think like Councilman Grimes says, the state may mandate something like that, but, you know, I think they're great. I think, you know, I'd like to have my, I just love pets, and I don't have time for them, so I wanna be able to treat them correctly. But again, we just don't know, there's certain areas of density, and so, we're always wanting to look at what the citizens of Cedar Park want, and we'll look at it again and see if we can fine-tune it somehow, and maybe like legislators said, we can work with that, too. Mr. Thomas.
Now, I decided, I think, and one of the things, we'll have to wait for the legislature. When, you know, we had a lot of input, pro, con, from citizens, and the, you know, knowing that if, if you do have a large enough lot, you can have changement in the city, we don't restrict. But there was a lot of input from citizens that had lived, lived in smaller lots, that had concerns. So, we have to, we listen to everybody, so, we're, we're open. But it's, you know, it's a, we have to address, you know, what the legislature does, but as, as Councilman Lux said, the HOAs, many of them, they're, they don't, they don't allow them, and so, even, we don't have authority to rule any HOA.
All right. Next audience question. Cap Metro has been a topic of conversation. What is your position on Cap Metro and why? Mr. Lux.
Yeah, that's, that's been a good question, because we do know that we're getting dense, and, you know, the months of block walking we've been doing, I've had that question about transportation, and I'm glad that the question did come up. The voters of Cedar Park decided in nineteen ninety-nine to opt out for Cap Metro, because they just, it was a one-cent sales tax, but this year alone will be thirteen million dollars, which pretty closely equates to our fire department, which is fourteen million, and our police department of eleven million. We had to give that twelve million dollars back for thirteen million dollars to Cap Metro, and there's no guarantee that we'd get any services. We'd have to take a ten percent cut in our budget across the city, and I'm not sure, you know, where we'd wanna take that from. And also, one of the other things that was meant, and I've seen in social media, is that the council voted against a eighty thousand, it was gonna cost eight thousand dollars for a route. It wasn't a route, it was a proof of concept, working with ACC to see if, if people would actually ride the bus. It was just a proof of concept, it was only gonna be for a short period of time, and it was decided by the council and ACC that it, it just wasn't gonna be worth the eighty thousand dollars, because they did, already were saying it wasn't gonna have the ridership. Mr. Thomas.
You know, when you look at, and it's projected, you know, you mentioned thirteen million, it's projected it's gonna be up to fifteen million dollars. If we were to give that kind of money away, and it's a huge sum of money, we wouldn't have a lot of economic development going on in the city. We wouldn't have the entertainment center of the city. So, we'd be a bunch of houses, and be property tax-based operations. And so, the citizen vote, it has been, it was an excellent decision by the citizens to, because it's going to allow us to continue to look at Bell Boulevard redevelopment, look at the quarry, and that's, you know, that's important, that we keep that money in the city, so.
Mr. Grimes.
So, just for those of you who may or not, so every time you set up, buy anything with sales tax, two cents of it come back to the city. Until nineteen ninety-nine, one cent of this did not. One cent went to Cap Metro, one came back to the city. And, and that, two thousand, that was equal to two million dollars. So, two million dollars, we gave to Cap Metro, two million dollars came back to the city. Since that time, since two thousand, to this day, these two pennies, together, equal about two hundred and twenty million dollars. So, that would mean we would give Cap Metro, since two thousand, a hundred and ten million dollars. That would be not invested in our city. So, instead, we kept the money, because the voters said to do so, and instead, we've been able to invest in our city, a hundred and ten million dollars, that's not gone just into our developments, which my councilman is sharing, which are great developments, by the way, but also into our parks, and into our roads, into infrastructure, to bring jobs. We brought over fifty-eight hundred new jobs in the last four years. Thank you.
And this is going to be our last audience question, but how do we balance the need for commercial and residential housing? We're gonna start with Mr. Lux.
You know, that's a, it's important to look at, and, you know, when I talked about, I just talked about the, you know, we'd be all residential at one point, and we, if, if we were all residential, we couldn't even support the, the property tax, we'd not be able to support our fire department, okay? Commercial, sales tax revenue is, is the big generator, and, and we want to continue growing that. So, there is a balance, and, and, you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough decision sometimes. You've got, you've got commercials saying, well, I've gotta have people to, you know, to be able to buy my goods, so I need residential, and then you've got, you know, residential development wanting to come in and take over, but it is a balancing act, but bottom line is, commercial property is what's going to allow the city to, to be independent and reduce the taxpayer burden on your property taxes.
Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Paul P is, is a hundred percent correct. So, in two thousand and twelve, the sales tax brought in twelve point five or so million dollars, this is just a sales tax. I'm sorry, that was two thousand and seventeen, I apologize. Two thousand and twelve, we brought in seven point eight million. Seven point eight million in two thousand and twelve, and now it's up to twelve point five, thirteen, fifteen, depends on what happens, and this year, hopefully, have a good Black Friday, go red park, let's be honest with you, it's a shot. Just, the difference is, that increase, just in those years, was allowing us, not only to have a fair opinion of what you did right now, to lower your, your property tax by three cents, and at the same time. So, it allows us to ease the burden on property owners, myself, you, all of us who owns homes, when we bring these jobs into town. So, fifty-eight hundred new jobs will come in, and it allows us to ease the burden on property owners, so, that's the piece.
Mr. Lux. Yeah, I see it as that, that balance is being very delicate, you know, as I was mentioning here, you really wanna be able to promote that sales tax revenue and be able to compete for our commercial and retail. But how we got to it, what we see is the balance, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. We looked at it from the staff side, where our councilmember, Steve, Thomas and I, we're on a member, and we developed these models, and we looked at, say, okay, if this is on this, what's our return on this? If it's on this, what's our return? We've hired consultants, we've hired economists. We've looked at our benchmark cities, and to be able to say, okay, what does, what does a good-looking, well-balanced city look like? We took that. Another path is, we went up to the citizens and said, what do you, what do the citizens of Cedar Park want? So, we did a comprehensive plan, where we had the citizens on, on the board, and they went for, I think it was two years, building the plan, and then what we did is, we took that comprehensive plan, and we looked and balanced it with what the, the needs of the city staff, and the consultants, and economists, and built a comprehensive plan to kind of balance it out, and we'll just go ahead and continue to protect and defend that comprehensive plan, and go forward with that vision, so we could have that nice balance.
My final question tonight is, what is the single issue you feel is not getting enough attention in Cedar Park right now? Mr. Grimes, we'll start with you.
So, the attention that I continue to, I wanna say, draws my attention, to be honest with you, is the older neighborhoods, the ranchettes. It's not that they're not getting, because it's actually on our agenda, and we've actually put money in this year to repave the streets of the older neighborhoods. And so, I'll continue looking at that. We've actually put in this budget cycle, the drainage issue, to start attending drainage, and how to, not just manage, but give equipment to drainage, to pay more attention to the older sections of our neighborhoods. So, that will always be something that is a passion of mine, and make sure there's no part of our city that's forgotten.
Mr. Lux. Yeah, we've been getting a lot of rain, and we've had a lot of rain for a long time, the lake's been really full for over two years now, and this is Texas. We will go through a drought again, we will, water will be an issue. As the President of Brushing Creek, you're in the utility authority, along with Councilmember Grimes, right now, we're still in the process of designing and working on getting to a deeper draw out in the lake to make us a little bit more drop tolerant. So, for me, we just, even though we have plenty of water, we're Texas, we will go through a drought, so we just need to make sure that we continue that project that we're working with the VCR UA to get out to a deeper draw to make us a little bit more drop tolerant. It's about a three or four-year more project, but we gotta keep focused on that, but with all the rain, we don't hear much about it, but Mr. Grimes, myself, and I are actively working that in the background to make sure that happens.
Mr. Thomas.
And I, I can't say that we, you know, there's, we're, we're not concerned, not paying attention to all of these issues, but I do have, you know, a concern that we do have to continue to work on, and it has to do with flooding and drainage. It's a project, it's going to take work with many partners, you know, it's forty-some odd million dollars worth of work that needs to be done to be able to keep people's houses from flooding, and have appropriate drainage in these ranchettes. And, and it's, it's a process, it's gonna take time. We unfortunately can't write a check, and I don't wanna sit there and do a big bond so that you're paying more taxes. So, we have to, we have to figure out how we're gonna do that, work with multiple partners, and, and make sure that it stays, you know, active, and continues, and we don't wait till the next flooding event that will adversely affect our citizens, so it's a, it's a big project.
And now, for closing remarks, we'll go in reverse order that we started, so Mr. Lux will start with you.
I love this city. This is a great city. I, I get emotional, and I think what a, what a great city that we've had, we have here. I picked this city because I love this city, and now I've lived, lived here, I still, I just love this city even more. And it's, and one of the reasons I came here was because it was ranked as the best city to raise your family, and it continues to grow up in that ranking for that, to raise a family. I mean, that alone, I think, is a great accomplishment that this council, before us have done, and I think the councilmembers up here, that we've been continuing to do. I think that, you know, council members up here that we've been continuing to do. And then you add in there that we've got the highest-rated fire department, we've got the second safest city with the police department. You've got 2,000 acres of parks that we're continually to, to improve on and to develop. We've got great infrastructure, you know, there's a little bit of traffic, but we're widening 1431, we're going to extend New Hope, we're extending, we're widening Anderson Mill. These are just great things. And then we just, I was, this weekend when we're all at the park doing the ribbon cutting, I'm just looking around going, wow, this is awesome that's coming to Cedar Park. This is just great. And, you know, I'm talking to citizens that they said, you know, six, seven years ago, they were driving to Austin and they, and to do all their shopping and retail and going out to dinner. And now they're going, now they're saying, you know, I can't, never last time I went down to Austin, you know, because it's, it's all here and it's because of the councils before us and the current council and keeping that vision of just being a great place to live, work, play, and have fun and just really enjoy it where you live.
Mr. Grimes.
It's a place to live. Everyone knows that. Sometimes you want to keep a secret.
Yeah.
Where now it's getting even a better place to work, you want to be a better, great place to live. But that's all of you, to be honest with you. Because you are the ones who live, work, play every day and put your life into our city. And you're the one that makes it, you're making great and you make it worthwhile to come up here and, and spend time away from our family and in that nature to, to volunteer and serve the city because of you. And I thank each one of you coming out tonight and I want you to help us continue to make Cedar Park a home. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
I'd like to thank the Chamber for sponsoring this event this evening. I've been fortunate, I've lived here since 1999 and I've watched this city grow and I've been able to serve the city for at least 10, 10 years. I've been on various boards and such for 10, 12 years. It's been great to be able to listen to my neighbors, tell us what they want so that we can make this a city that they want to live in. I love it. I, I love to drive around and, and, you know, I took my daughters a few years ago and drove them to all little secret places around. They, she don't really think about this lake and all the nice facilities that we have here. They didn't even realize that how great a city we have, how, how, you know, it's, it happens to have that small-town flavor yet we have all the, everything that you need to live here. And we want to continue doing that and I want to continue representing you all and I appreciate the opportunity. It is a tremendous honor for myself, my colleagues to represent the citizens. We hear you and we do everything we can sometimes, but we don't make everybody happy, but we try because we do this to you all and that's very important to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. As you know, the Cedar Park Chamber of Commerce is nonpartisan, we do not endorse candidates, but we do listen to our platform because it has a direct impact on the business community. All of the candidates were invited to the forum, one candidate declined to come and one candidate did not respond. The Chamber represents over 750 businesses, nonprofits, and individuals. Want to take a moment to thank the candidates for showing up and answering the questions from the business community and we really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Being engaged with the businesses of Cedar Park is extremely important for our future growth. Thank you all for showing up and attending. Be sure to vote, I believe the candidates have all agreed to stay and answer a few more questions as long as there aren't any more chicken questions. But please feel free to help yourself to refreshments in the back and have a good evening. Thank you for coming out. (APPLAUSE)